All right, this work session of the Luray Town Council now come to order. Will you stand and join me for a moment of silence, please? I'll ask Councilman Webb to lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mayor Docmar?
Here.
Mr. Vickers? Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. Sharrow?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here. That's right. I'm trying to get here.
Just use my...
Good, good, thanks.
All right, Mr. Burke, blighted properties and derelict buildings.
Yes, the council's requested to discuss a draft of a code amendment, or two code amendments, that would allow the town to better react to derelict buildings and blighted properties. The amendment could be the Chapter 26 Buildings and Building Regulations, and then 78, which is our byance section. Effectively, what we're doing is creating a carrot and stick that if we determine that a property is derelict, deficient, has been disconnected from utilities, it's boarded up, it's deficient, that the council would then have the opportunity to require the property owner to either come up with a plan to fix the building up, or to plan to demolish it. If they fail to respond, the town could then proceed with pursuing demolition of the building. Then the property owner would be able to recover some of their loss through a tax abatement on the property. The town attorney provided updated code amendments at your seats. Prior to the meeting, there's been a question, a couple of questions that were specific to the application of it. I would probably request that if you don't have any specific questions to report to the application, it would probably be better directed to the town attorney at our next meeting in minutes. But I know that there's been brought up at previous meetings, a lot of concern about the town to pursue some action, or at least try and compel some of our vacant property owners to pursue some improvements. And the town attorney will go into this, which would hopefully allow our property owners also to pursue some improvements.
So I see this tonight as just a general, maybe, it's a lot here to absorb, maybe we'll just talk about it a little bit, if y'all have any thoughts. As Steve said, probably better to wait till Jason is here, if you have any detailed questions. You all know this ordinance is near and dear to my heart, probably. Ninety-five percent of the calls I get are complaints about abandoned, derelict, blighted buildings, and I just don't think, right now, we have the best tools to deal with it. So, again, we're not going to get it done tonight, maybe not the next month or so, but I think we need to start working on something. I noticed in the survey, that was a concern of folks, abandoned buildings, fallen down buildings, whatever. So, anybody have any thoughts on what you've seen so far?
Only a thing I noticed with it, I didn't see where it was clear on, and I mean, I don't even know if any of this existing, but just, for example, what would happen if, and I realize why I have to ask you, but if there's a property, that there's another structure on the property, other than the dwelling, you know what I mean, to where that structure is in such poor condition and meets these hazards, as far as health and safety and all that, but someone still lives in a different structure on that property, where does the vacant, I just want to get to that point, if we had a property like that, would this even apply? Because the property's per se not vacant, because someone's still living there, but there's a separate structure that is the problem, that you know, near a neighbor or something like that. And I just thought, as we study this and look at it, that may be something to consider that we could encounter.
Says derelict buildings, I would think that would cover it.
Yeah, but if you look at, one of the requirements is that the property be vacant or unoccupied, so it doesn't necess, the way I read it, is it specific to the building or specific to the real estate? Because someone could still live in the home, but this other building, and the other building could be even bigger than the home, and be in such disrepair that it's the nuisance or the threat, but someone still lives on the same real estate.
And I think a nuance, and I would definitely defer to Jason, the blighted property, that's why there's reference to blighted property and the derelict buildings, is that I think if there is a, another, an accessory structure or another building, we might have to pursue the blighted property, if it's not specifically the residential dwelling that's derelict. So, I think, I think the reason that Jason incorporated multiple state code references into the code that the town considered, is to give council a broader sword to wield, if you will.
So what timeframe, is there any, yes, within ninety days, they have to have a plan, but how, is there anything in here that dictates how much time they have thereafter, once they have a plan?
Well, either thirty to ninety days.
Now, that's to develop a plan, right, not to perform the action?
After, well, it's thirty to ninety days, if they don't respond, if they respond, then council has to, and part of the plan, I believe, has to be that they give us a schedule of whatever remediation they're proposing. And that's where council has to determine, if they came in and said, yeah, give me five years and the property will be fine, I think you have the ability to say, no, five years is not acceptable to the town, and then we'll pursue other avenues to remedy it, either through the civil penalty, or action by the town to pursue the remediation.
Yeah, I think that's one point, that's the biggest point to me, that I can see that, I'd like to just know for sure, really, understand that. Because it'd be easy to come up with a plan, and say, oh, sure, yeah.
But I do think that they have to come up with some milestones with that plan, that the council's considering.
See if Jason can flush that out, just to sort of assure one knows.
Steve, do we have some pictures?
I'm sorry, sir.
So I just went around and took, I think, four or five shots, I didn't want to get too deep in it, I did not take pictures of any homes anybody was living in. Of course, I think all of you know where this property is. Is that Bank Street?
Yes, sir.
The back of it, I didn't, again, I didn't take too many pictures of the back of it, well, this is, of course, the, the back of this property's pretty visible from the, or the guy at the deli has his picnic tables and all that, and it's also invisible from the greenway, I guess, go ahead, Steve. And of course, we all know where this one is, and again, this one is quite visible from the back of the greenway, if you notice, there's a tree growing up in the right-hand side there, and I believe it's starting to get into the mortar, which is creating a dangerous situation. But did somebody put a door in that, we're having trouble with?
We've had it busted up several times, we called the owner, but then he sent a handyman and had to fix it. Yeah, and it is a tree, that tree is in the mortar, and it's actually going to fall.
But is there another door there that's still open, are people still getting in there, are we still having problems?
Right now, well, the door that, the only place it's open is like, I don't know, there's a window at one time, but it's a bunch of lumber piled in front of it, from when they just threw it down, from when they re-modding the upstairs, it's all piled up and fried. It's really not accessible, unless you kind of remember, but, yeah, but that door's easily open, usually, they usually kick it open.
So if we, if we're doing this at the determination of the town manager, that it's a derelict building, and we're doing it independent of the uniform building code standards for property, do we need to come up with standards that, did he include some general standards on that?
We'll have, I'll check.
Because it seems to me that we're going to have to have some standard, say this building is blighted or derelict, and this one's not. Because we're going to have, once we enact this, you're going to have a lot of calls from people saying, come look at my neighbor's house. It looks, you need to...
And then, once you, if a property's identified, or there's a complaint, and you start the process on that, you could probably see that under, say, well, what about these six others?
Exactly, what you're going to find.
Yeah, all this other...
That's exactly what happened.
Right.
Is that still owned by the same person that's own it for?
Yes.
Okay. We'll say the names.
Some type of check sheet, uniform check sheet, you know, just, I'm not just saying on a suggestion, is electric, so electrics have plumbing, does that social damage, plus it out windows, you know, maybe they want some type of check sheet that they need certain criteria, then say, okay, it's qualified.
Yeah, there needs to be some kind of standard.
Is this the one next to Mr. Frye, or the one on the corner?
Yeah.
This is the one next to Mr. Frye, of course, this game spoke to us fast, in our regular meeting.
This was nineteen, and this is nineteen twenty. And this is the ranch that's all the trees that the town went down and...
It's amazing how degraded it is versus the Google Maps, just when I pulled it up when he was here, I mean, it's a whole difference from...
And that, that, that ranch also hit the neighbor's house last year.
Oh, my gracious.
This one is actually on Greenfield Road, I believe, is it Jen's neighbor?
It's twenty Greenfield.
Wow.
This has to be...
That is a...
It's another picture, yeah.
I believe, I believe that's a foreclosure, or in the bank, just... Is anybody mowing it now? I mean, obviously, not recently, but...
I was lucky, I was able to get the son-in-law, two years ago, to mow it, but there's so much stuff in the yard, and he don't, they didn't, so they just let the bank have it, so they don't even touch it anymore.
And how does that work with the banks? Are they not liable to, I mean, they start to keep the grass under?
The big issue with the banks is they'll sell it to another bank, or another company, and trying to track them down who actually is responsible for, that's our biggest issue with the bank. Sometimes we do it through the attorney, that's not working for the bank, but that's tough
All right, anybody else have thoughts on that?
I think it's a good idea, I think...
We need to do something.
I think it's long overdue. Yeah.
We got probably twenty other houses, that's not the...
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
And, you know, we're losing tax revenue, we're losing water and sewer customers, it's downgrading the properties next door, it's just, I just think we need to do something.
Just need to make sure that we have everything in place when we start it, because, like, some kind of, because I underfeet, I was in another jurisdiction, it took us to court over it, and said, how did you determine it was blighted? And said, well, I can't, I don't know what blight is, but I know it when I see it, and the judge, judge said, no, it's not going to work.
It worked in one court.
Well, that, that, that was another subject, wasn't it?
Yes.
I think it was, okay. All right, anybody else want, any more discussion on that before we move on? All right, Steve, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to discuss a request from Ramsey to boundary line adjust about five and a half acres of property into the town limits, to allow them to construct duplexes off of there, the road. We discussed this previously, and then this was also shared with Page County, so that the town and county could develop a friendly boundary line adjustment. The delay has been that Page County and the developer have been addressing some classic issues. Originally, the application had been for six acres, and it has been reduced to five-point-six. I understand that the county staff has no issues with this, so they will be similarly presenting it to the board supervisors. So, once we hear that the board is comfortable with proceeding with action, then we'll bring this back to your consideration at the public hearing.
Does this go through the planning commission? Or just come to us?
I'm going to check on that.
Pretty sure, just be for the...
I think it is just council, but we can at least present it to them, see if they have any concerns.
All right, so we need to wait for the county then to do something, is that correct?
Well, we need to make sure that the board is super, well, I guess, the first question is, is council comfortable with proceeding with a friendly boundary line adjustment? Then we need to wait and hear that the supervisors are equally comfortable with that, and then once we know that both bodies are willing to proceed, that's when each body will have to do their independent, public hearing.
Counsel, anybody opposed?
Is it all it takes, is both bodies agreeing to it, and then?
Or are you friendly?
Friendly, okay.
If there's contention, that's where it goes to the courts.
That's the unfriendly mountain of your life.
So we can just agree by acclamation, or we want to go ahead with it, with the county, is that, that's all we need?
If there's no one that opposes it, that's what I would relate to have me tomorrow.
All right, Steve?
Last item for council's consideration or discussion tonight, the town has received our second appropriation of ARPA funding, and council had determined that, once we had received that, we would start consideration of how to proceed with the second, with allocating those funds. Brian has been working with one of the metering companies to possibly develop a loan funding solution for that expensive initiative, that would hopefully free up additional monies for council's consideration of allocation. It's my understanding from Brian, that there would potentially need to be a down payment of two hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that we would hope that would come from ARPA, to allow a better byance incentive for that, but it greatly reduces the eight-hundred-thousand to a million-dollar price tag that we were originally seeking.
Good idea. This for the digital meters?
Yes, sir.
So, let me just make sure I get this right, under your, well, when you go to the chart, under twenty-one, starting with the bolded four-hundred thousand, or in twenty-one coming straight down. Now, if you go all the way down, that's, it says subtotal, and then total is two, two-point-two-one-two million, at the very end of the twenty-one column? If you just stay on twenty-one, just go all the way down?
To the next page?
Yeah, to the next page.
It's on the next page, yeah.
Is that what has been allocated?
I believe council has allocated the full two-point-five million, or thereabouts, that we received in the first tension. And I apologize, I need to get with Danielle, she's been keeping a better log, this was more of just planning, but we will definitely give y'all a more...
I think I understand, then you go to twenty-two, and you come down, that goes to two-point-three-nine-nine, but I just know some of those things, I don't think we, at the very top of that, if you go to the top of twenty-two, fifteen, fifty, I don't think we've allocated those yet, maybe the bolded ones, we already have allocated.
And again, I think all the, because of the way that the funding had come through, I think it was only the items in the twenty-one column that had...
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just would like, I mean, maybe Danielle could explain it, but I just think an easy list, this is what we spent, and this is what the amount is, because I just, that's, I'm, I'm easy, I just get too many columns going.
I can tell you, though, that what we've spent to date is about eight-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, and of course, that does not include purchase orders for several capital projects, that of course, we had to order, I think both those were with Atlantic Machinery. I apologize, I don't have those in front of me, but those were the larger projects that, Brian, I believe you issued purchase orders for those in order to...
One's a vacuum truck, one's a street sweep, so those are, he owes their issue, the money's obligated, but we haven't actually received.
Correct, yeah.
Did they come in range with what we expected?
Actually, the one was a little cheaper, the one was a little more, so they were fairly close to the overall total.
That's refreshing, huh?
It was refreshing, yeah.
But at the lift station, we've already allocated that, right?
Yes, sir.
So what were you saying, that we have eight hundred, we've only spent eight hundred so far?
That's what, yes, that is what has been received and paid.
Actually, okay.
About eight-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand.
More than, more than that's obligated, yeah.
A lot, yeah.
A lot more than that's obligated.
And then also with that sewer lift station, keep in mind that initially, we had only looked at about five-hundred thousand, and my friend, it's about like one-point-one-million, so...
That's another, that's what started me looking at the potential tenure financing for the remote meters, because if we're able to offset those funds, we can use some more of those, a few more of those dollars against, you know, that pump station, and then put a down payment of whatever we can afford on to those meters, and then they finance the rest. It's great Southwest Finance out of San Antonio, I mean, they do a huge number of municipal projects nationwide, but they're strictly a municipal financier, and...
Well, they require general obligation, or less, finance it just on the utility?
I think we have either-or option, so we could pick, we could pick and choose, they're going to want to see what our rates would be, and I would prefer to go, you know, one's a lot easier tax-wise and audit-wise than the other, so I would prefer to go the easier route, but we can go, I think we'll have the option to do that, and certainly, revenue should, from water and sewer, for those new meters, should help cover a significant portion of those costs every year for the next decade. So, we could really see, we could take a twenty-year product and get it paid off ten years.
Yeah, it seems like it would be more straightforward, just to finance it with water and sewer revenues.
It would be, rather than general obligation.
Rather than general obligation.
That ties our hands more.
Yeah. Besides that, it's being passed directly on to the customers, and future customers.
And that's what they like to see, that's what they, they would prefer the rates cover the debt service, and that's what I think we should prefer to. But I'm still in conversation with them, and I'm meeting with the company rep to DAF tomorrow, talk about contracting through EVO, to see if there's already a contract out there that we can piggyback on, then that saves us huge number, amount, right up front, from R and Bs and all that stuff. So we could just jump on to that, and cut out all the middleman costs.
Good idea, it leverages the money.
Yep, that's the plan.
The only new item that has come in, in between the town's previous discussion, the Luray Park Association has indicated that there's a need for some rehabilitation of the singing tower, that they would request council's consideration towards assistance. But, again, when y'all get into your further discussions, we'll provide you the details that the park association can provide to the town.
So could that be considered under this nonprofit, I agree? Yeah, just, also, just back to Steve's sheet, just keeping in mind as well, obviously, we have not spent anything yet for account management, we haven't done anything for business grant or nonprofit grant, all of those are still kind of a moving target, that I know we still wanted to talk about. We have spent some of those, I guess you would call them account management funds, for legal fees for the town attorney, but that's very small compared to what we have budgeted, so we have some give and take within there. I know some projects are definitely coming higher, but there are things that we haven't fully expended, or planned to, so...
It looks like everything at twenty-one has been spent, and at twenty-two, I mean, like imagination stations at three-nineteen, is that what that ended up coming in as?
About that, I think, between the fifth, I think all total, it was like three-fifty, between the fifty-six that was in the twenty-one, I think council did approve moving that forward to twenty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's two, it's two there, okay, that's right.
Yeah, but keep in mind, the West Loop's still at five-thirty on here, so... But the updated sheet, what's actually been spent, what's actually allocated, what's filled up for grabs.
If it helps, I mean, I don't want to run through what we've spent so far really quickly. Obviously, the first allocation of hazard pay, that was done in December of twenty-one. We've got legal fees, which we just discussed, the first round of advertising through the Page News and Courier, I know we talked about that today, we plan to look at that in the future. Also, the HVAC improvement projects, those were on Steve's list as well, the body cameras, police equipment, we were able to pay for all of that upfront, as opposed to a leasing option, that was first considered, then the, let's see, I believe the sewer cameras, sorry, it's a bit small, sewer camera came in at around a hundred-eight thousand for that project, all the playground and associated equipment and so forth, demo, all of that came in, I think around three-twenty. We've also paid a little bit on the electric upgrades, starting that for Mechanics Street, we paid some initial items on that, and then initial funding for race engineering for the greenway extension. And the first pay request by Patterson Construction for the pump station has come in as well. So, that gets us to our eight-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand.
And the good news towards that five-thirty number, we received connection fees from the Luray Meadows Apartments, and we've received a handful of connection fees for the town homes from D.R. Horton. In addition, we've received the payment for forty-eight, the seventeen-hundred-dollar additional fee, so there is additional monies that the town has received that can be applied towards that lift station cost.
Sure. Well, just to reiterate, would it be possible, but next one, I don't want to give you too much, just to give a straight list of what's been allocated and what's been spent, so, you know, kind of same thing, but that way we can... Well, done a lot, I mean, it's, it's, it's been...
The remaining items on that list are, some of those are on page two, they're barely critical for plant operations, either wastewater plant and the water treatment plant, so some of those costs are going to be a little higher, some of the sewer costs are actually going to be a little lower, I think, some of the water costs might be a touch higher, but overall, those are critical component items for those two plants that, I mean, we can talk about them all we want, but if we don't have those plants running, they're, we're in bad shape, so, some of that...
Talk about under twenty-two, Brian?
Yeah, under twenty-two for the water and wastewater plant expenditures, some of those are going to have to be, either we pay for them at ARPA, or we pay for them out of general fund, which is not...
Eventable expenses there, that, yeah, that we have. I was, spoke with Joey the other day, and I was surprised that, to hear that we've got pumps at our water treatment plant, some that have been rebuilt ten or twelve times, and when I heard them... And when I heard that, I'm like, that is unbelievable. And I mean, I realize they're designed, or should be, to be rebuilt, but like anything, you can only rebuild, rebuild something so many times.
Expect to call for five, like five rebuilds. But we've rebuilt over and over and over, and put rotating assemblies and things like that in, but, like I said, I've got one right now that is about two hundred and fifty gallons per minute under what the other runs, at the same exact hurts, because it's been rebuilt so many times, and so it's, it's starting to fail.
Right, so even with rebuilds, they're failing.
Yes.
Well, we have to remember, you know, for most, several of us in the room, you know, our water plant was new, it's twelve years old, you know, that thing was built, we dedicated that in twenty-ten.
And the finished water was in that building, that's, that's the original water plant. So those were put in, in nineteen ninety-three, I believe, so, and they were all put in with bronze, so now, the new ones are upgraded to stainless steel, so they'll last longer.
Calvary's coming to hell.
Coming, they're coming over the hill.
Sorry, I forgot to silence him.
But the good news is, is that the money has been, ARPA money has been received, and so council will be seeking your guidance, how you best want to allocate those homes.
Anybody else on that subject? All right, that's all that's on the agenda, anybody have anything they want to bring up?
Did you check on the Page Valley News?
We did not include that in the budget, but Vice Mayor Shiro had inquired about the renewal of funding for the advertising on the Page Valley News, it's about seventy-two hundred dollars. We did not include the second, or renewal of that in the budget, but that could be something that council could consider using the, the next funding from ARPA for...
When does that do?
It's due in September.
Is it real?
It's what I was told, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's coming up. They, they did want to let us know, so that it would be considered.
He didn't go to the road of knees, I have to...
All right, anybody else on anything? All right. Where's John?